I'm going to call Guy in on this line.
Okay.
But not for the closed session.
Okay, that's fine. I told him I would just text him before we called him in.
Okay. Let's call him in. I want him to be able to, well.
You can.
Just call him in for the bus.
Yeah, 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 that's what I was saying.
Text him and let him know that we're going to start the open session, go into closed session, come out of closed session.
Welcome to City Council Chambers for a special meeting as we come together to move forward in Radford's future. We're going to go into closed session for just a minute. We'll leave the live video on, but then we'll come back into open session. And we do have an announcement about the future with a new city manager. And so I'd like to make a motion to convene a closed meeting for the purposes of discussion or consideration of prospective candidates for employment and performance of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will go into closed session. We are going to step over in the conference room and we will be back. You all can stay in here.
Mute. Got it.
Motion and a second. And any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'd also like to make a motion that council did not discuss anything in the closed meeting other than the item for which it was convened. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we have one more piece of business to do before we can do our other business. Guy Wolford was unable to be with us this evening, but we are going to call him in as part of the meeting. I dial nine and then the area code, but no one.
No one, correct.
I just wanted to make sure.
Is that right?
Hi, Guy.
Hello, yes.
Hey, it's David Horton. We're here at City Council and we need to go through and do a little business to get you to join our meeting, okay?
Super.
Okay, so I would, do we have a motion to allow Guy Wolford to join into the meeting this evening?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Guy, would you tell everybody where you are and the reason that you're not able to be present for the meeting?
Yes, Guy Wolford in Nashville, Tennessee on vacation.
Okay, all right. I know, we all would love to be there, but this is a very special day for the city of Radford. Since our previous city manager announced his retirement last year, we have been in the process of moving forward with new leadership for the city. And as such, we hired Craig Meadows as our interim city manager last fall. He has been serving in that role since January. During that time, council conducted a search that included many very, very qualified potential candidates from across the Commonwealth and the nation. And we came up with some wonderful possible candidates for this role as finalists, ultimately settling on Timothy Todd Meredith. Todd Meredith, who has been the town manager of Perrisburg since 2017 and will be coming onboard to join us. So let's do some official business, then we'll get to some more introductions and go from there. Do we have a motion for this resolution to approve the employment agreement for the city manager for the city of Radford?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Jenny, would you call the role for this one?
Mrs. Artrip?
Yes.
Mrs. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Gillespie?
Yes.
Mr. Wolford? Mr. Wolford?
Yes.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Mayor Horton?
Yes. And so with that, we'd like to welcome Todd Meredith to the city of Radford. I'm going to give him a chance to say something, but I want to tell you a little bit more about him. As I said, he's been serving as the town manager of Perrisburg since 2017. And prior to his work in local government, he spent a decade as a public school teacher. During his tenure in Perrisburg, he led initiatives focused on infrastructure improvement, fiscal responsibility, and regional cooperation. He also served as the board chair of the Giles County Public Service Authority and as a member of the Board of Directors for both the Corillian Giles Community Hospital and Virginia's first regional industrial facility authority. He is a wonderful candidate for this role. We think he will bring many, many needed skills to the city of Radford that will help transform our community and help us be the strongest version of our city that we could possibly be. At this time, actually, I'm going to ask you, Todd, if you'll come on down and we'd love for you to say a few words so just people can get to know you. We are going to do a little more formal introduction and welcome at our meeting later in June and then also at our July meeting when he is able to join us full time as of July 21st. But for now, Todd.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone who's been here. Thank you for the warm welcome this evening. I'm most appreciative. Mayor Horton, City Council, I'm most appreciative for the opportunity that you all have extended to me. I want you to know how grateful I am that you are willing to bring me on your team to serve such a beautiful, vibrant community that Radford is. Spent quite a bit of time here years ago. Love Radford. Radford's a cool place. Radford is a great place to spend time. It's a great place, I'm sure, to live. Look forward to working with you all, city staff, to put together a vision for the city and to build an organization that can supply you all with the information that you need and the operational capacity that you need to serve the residents of this community. And I look forward to working with you all to improve the quality of life and to live and work together. So thank you very much. I'm very excited to get started.
Thank you, Todd. We are so incredibly excited to have you join us. And I'm going to give everybody just a chance to say a few words. Seth, do you have some thoughts for us this evening?
No, I think I'll piggyback off what the mayor said. We were very fortunate to have a lot of good applicants and we're so happy with Todd and we can't wait to look, we look forward to working with you. You met everything that we were looking for and we know that you're going to be a great asset to this community. We look forward to working with you and welcoming your family to Radford. Radford is a special place and I hope, I know that you will help be a part of its future and helping us get to where we want to be. So I just wanted to extend a big welcome. We're very excited to have you and look forward to working with you and can't wait to get started. So welcome and thank you.
Jesse?
We're all going to probably say about the same thing. But I just want to say that we are very excited. You have an exemplary skill set that we know you will take this community to the next level. So we're just glad to have you here. We're ready to get you onboard, get out your muck boots, roll up your sleeves. We're there with you, but we're ready to get to work.
Thank you. Kelly?
I just wanted to say thank you very much for accepting our offer. We did have some amazing candidates. How many applicants did we have? Craig? Seventeen and there was a. Yes, so it was definitely a lot of experience to weed through and we definitely took our time. And I think we did make a very good choice in you. You seem like a really go-getter. I love the fact that you have a lot of Six Sigma background. I think that's going to really be helpful to maybe analyze and. and make sure that everything is running efficiently, and get some good information for our community and for council to be able to utilize to move forward. I loved the fact that you've, you know, built reserves in Perrisburg and done a lot in the time that you were there. So we are really lucky to have you, and welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Guy, do you have anything for us?
Well, yes, I want to welcome him to the city also. I'm so glad that he's an area boy that we're keeping in our area. Again, I was impressed with his skill set that he presented to us, and we're just looking forward to putting him to work and working him hard. So welcome aboard.
There you go, Todd. You've heard it all, you know. I'll just say once again, welcome. We are so thrilled that you are excited to come here and work with us in Radford to help Radford really maximize all the wonderful things that are here to be the very best version of our city that we can be. And we are so excited. And with that, we will conclude today's meeting. We will be meeting again on June 17th to get together. That's a little different. We'll be on Tuesday night, June 17th with some business. And then Todd will be with us in July. His first day will be July 21st, and we will keep moving forward from there. I would encourage anyone here, anyone online, to go online and on our social media here pretty soon to look at the press release. We do have a press release that tells you more about this wonderful individual who's coming to work with the city, and how excited we are to have him here. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say goodbye. Goodbye.
Goodbye.